Put it in plain, simple English. No person should obstruct the transaction of business at a meeting, or behave offensively or improperly. If this standing order is ignored, the chairman of the meeting shall request such persons to moderate or improve their conduct. No person, whether a member of the council or of the public, shall disregard the rules of the chairman, or, in the view of the chairman, will be obstructed the transaction of business at a meeting, or behave offensively, irregularly, or improperly, or in such a manner as to bring the council into disrepute. While I'm reading this out, because this evening, people that choose to disrupt the meeting, this standing order will be invoked. Yes. And if, in the opinion of the chairman or any councillor, so if any of you feel that there is disruption, there has been a breach of standing order within an hour, both the chairman or the councillors have expressed their opinion, and the chairman shall request the offender to desist, advising that further breaches of standing orders result in exclusion from the meeting. When the chairman's request has been disregarded, a resolution shall be agreed by the chairman or a councillor, and if seconded or put forth with, without discussion, requiring the offender to withdraw from the meeting. This is a once and once only warning, guys. Standing orders to sort your conduct is not a place.
Does that apply to our chairman?
Pardon everybody, cast your brooks.
Thank you.
Moving forward, it's now three minutes past six. Receive apologies for absence. Councillor Lucas said that she was going to be running late, so we don't need to receive her apologies, she's just going to be running late this meeting, I believe. And Sally Allen is giving no apologies, so somebody propose Sally Allen, seconded by Vince, all those in favour? That's everybody. Declarations of interest. Members are asked to declare, if required, any disposable pecuniary interests they may have in respect to items on the agenda. Good evening, Mrs Lucas. Mrs Lucas has joined the meeting now. And any other interests they may have in respect to items on the agenda. So if you've got any declarations of interest, if you want to pass the books round to Joyce, please. Members are also reminded to inform the clerk of any changes in their register of members' interests. So that's not just to do with this meeting, but any other interests that they do outside this council, they should record them with the council. So that could be where you're working with volunteer groups or with charity organisations, okay? So if you're doing any of that, you have declared it, you could be in breach of rules and codes of conduct. So please make sure you register, everybody. Thank you. Item three is declarations by the public. Members of the public are invited to address the meeting according to the procedures. There are no members of the public here. Item four is to appoint a responsible financial officer, and this is to do with the continuing absence of the clerk, to appoint the acting clerk as the RFO for the council. Would anyone else say anything at this point?
It might be helpful if I can just, for a very short, make a very short statement that covers the next two or three items.
Yeah.
And the circumstances in which you called this meeting, and the background too.
Yes, it would probably help give some formula to why we need to appoint an RFO. Okay, thank you, Michael, if you'd like to carry on.
Okay. For two and a half months, in Richard White's absence, Alison has been standing in as the clerk to the council. This has involved meeting with salaries, VAT, production, regular monthly cash accounting reports for the council, including banker conciliations. Additionally, in this two and a half month period, the clerk has had to deal with a myriad of other day-to-day tasks, often on a firefighting basis. The finance working group has had to have as a priority in that time, supporting Alison in every way possible, as other councillors have also done. In order to get to where we are today with the general items before you, that the chairman would now deal with, that has required, and will still require today, support from the finance working group, four clerk. This work has been complicated by the need to have in mind the document sent by a councillor, Director Grant Thornton, the council's external auditor, heading one hundred and fifty different breaches of the council's financial responsibilities as to proceed. Of twenty in-depth objections lodged in that letter, plus a hundred and twenty separate allegations of breach of procedural rules, the finance working group, the clerk, have taken the interim view that eight items need to be looked at further, and that the other one hundred and forty-two can be cleared as non-significant or unjustified. Work will continue on the eighth, and the finance working group and the clerk will report back to council in due course. The heading of procedural complaint, if there are any in that eighth, or indeed in any others, will be instances of the clerk exceeding his authority to pay valid counter-items as they became due. There is no suggestion, and there is no evidence of any other irregularities other than that, exceeding his authority to pay. Thank you, Mr Chairman.
Okay, that's just to give some background on it. And are there any questions or alterations before we move to the next item? Have you got a question?
Yeah, it's just a comment, because obviously I wasn't named, but I'm the councillor who's raised the objections, and the number might be scary to some members if you don't know what those other objections were. They are basically, and I accept that they may be classed as irrelevant, but it is a procedural failing. When the Street's accountant says that every invoice that's in that file tape must have a work order attached, that is the number of invoices that have not followed the correct procedure. No one's saying, as Michael kindly pointed out, that there's been any, let's see, right to use the word dishonesty here. There's been no dishonesty or anything like that, it's overstepping authority and not following procedures that were put in place to stop what I consider was a mess that happened up until that Street thing. So I hope that explains to members why there seems to be a large volume. It's that I was permitted to go and inspect the file, and that's just purely what it is. So they may just say, that's one complaint, those hundred and whatever it is. So I hope that explains it.
Okay, yes. Michael, I'll come over to this.
Yeah, just to clarify that, the work of the working group has done to date has found all of that. It's all what it was, following Street's recommendation, one has been found out of the work itself.
They weren't attached when I was there. I don't understand that, because I was handed, but I was handed the files.
Actually, once more time.
Sorry, Chairman.
No, because Vince was left in line, or do you want to disrespect everybody around the table?
No.
Clarify one thing for my own ineptness, really. So out of a hundred and forty-two, a hundred and fifty complaints, what cost does that cost the council and the taxpayers?
Okay, if these guys had looked into it, if they were earning twenty pounds an hour, or charging twenty pounds an hour, a hundred and twenty items would have cost this council two thousand four hundred pounds. If we'd have used legal services, and the cheapest that is available is the ones which are pointed to by councillor Brooks, are from Peterborough, that would be eighty pounds an hour, so you can do the maths for that. So basically, we're talking thousands of pounds. If Grant Thornton chose to look into all these complaints that have been submitted by the councillor, and councillor Brooks has admitted that he's responsible for that, it could be bringing another invoice extremely higher than two thousand four hundred pounds back to the taxpayers of Oakland. So Oakland taxpayers will be paying for councillor Brooks's unfounded allegation, basically. Okay? So what we're going to do, if we're going to move on, this is...
Excuse me, that's a very unfair comment to make.
At this point, thank you for clarifying that point. I'd like to put a vote of thanks on the table for the two Michaels and Alison for the work that they've carried out.
Yeah, and Jasmine.
And Jasmine as well, sorry. But so the work that's been carried out, two, keep us going and looking the way that we are. Thank you.
Okay, well, could you be called about thanks for Michael, Jasmine and yourself? Councillor, you got, what will we find?
Yeah, can you retract that thing of unfounded? Because they've already pointed out that there are eight things that will be looked into. I'm not liking the attitude that what I've done, yes, it is unfortunate, as I pointed out, if we were told that the internal auditor was coming, these things could have been dealt with in the processes with the internal auditor.
Councillor, I will, I'm getting to...
Yeah, I'm going to wind up. I sat outside there for two hours with both folders, and I don't lie, when I'm told there's only one work order found wrong, so why did I sit there and list every single one by voucher number that didn't have a work order attached? I'm not making it up, I sat there for over two hours in the time which was organised with the clerk and wrote them down. Unfortunately, you take the view that this is a waste of money for taxpayers, it's not. If the council were doing the job properly in the first place, it wouldn't cost the taxpayers any money. This is what happened with the internal, external audit.
Right, I'm going to just stop that, because otherwise I would never be able to speak before the end of the meeting.
Yes, sorry.
Just to clarify, I think you were just... Yeah, absolutely.
But what I'm trying to say is, please don't say unfounded, it's for the auditor to make those comments.
Right, some of them, most of these were unfounded, but that's the fact, you make reference, you pointed out several perks orders that have been raised without works orders. If you look at the day when the Street's was actually applied, or the Street's audit was done and the recommendation were in, a lot of the perks orders that you picked out went before that day. So to clarify, to the benefit of the table, for the members of the public that are listening to this recording, a hundred and twenty items of twenty pounds per hour is two thousand four hundred pounds wasted by one of the councillors on this council. Right, the council resolution is...
I asked for the relevant information.
What the proposal is, the council resolves, I'm going to ask you to dissent, and that's your last warning, the council resolves that in accordance with the principle to the openness of local government bodies' regulations two thousand and fourteen, and to facilitate its business, its assistant clerk, Miss Alison Greaves, is forthwith appointed pro term as top officer of the council and responsible financial officer, and is delegated such authorities and responsibilities as are required for post. That is the proposal from the chair, settled by Michael Hayley. All those in favour? Any against? One abstention?
And can I give my reasons why I'm against?
No, because you don't put them there. No, don't do that. Okay, so we now have a, that's the RFO figure. All right, what was that bit?
Can I just say we didn't debate that?
Right, we're going to move on now to annual government statements. Number five, to approve the annual government statement, section one of the annual return to two thousand and fifteen.
Um, to the chair, I'd like to ask councillor Hayley.
Yeah, just go on to that. That's interesting, there are eight, but I'm going to do rest of it. I'm quite serious, this is what I'm...
If it's catching him, no.
Yeah, sorry, is it one?
Thank you for your, the paper just, I'll talk to you now. The annual government statement, the copy of which was circulated, re-mail by Alison quite recently, the working group felt that needed evidence to support the assertions that Alison has made with the support of and advice of the working group. So the item numbers, one to nine, correspond to the numbers on the annual government statement that you've already had. So the first one, have you seen, we've got a copy of that?
Yeah, which is it, which is in here.
Which is the one that went out. So for the first one, we've put in place a rating for technical management during the year, and for preparation of the accounting statement, Alison has said yes, with our support, and the evidence for this is the internal audit report, September ninth, fifteen, that was the interim one. Council noted the reports in tenth, fifteen. Internal audit compliance testing for procurement, November fifteen. Internal audit annual statement, June sixteen. Internal audit annual report yet to be released, but we'll find it in the document, on the six page document, the internal auditor has signed his sheets as assurance that the internal audit is compliant and is satisfied. And the account that you've already had, prepared by Street, which shows that the figures they came up with are exactly the same as the figures that council came up with, or so in this case, the assistant clerk came up with. Item two, we maintain that as a system of internal control, including measures, excuse me, designated to prevent and detect fraud and corruption and reviews the effectiveness. A very powerful one, monthly bank reconciliation, which is verified by the finance working group and presented to the council, that's a very important and strong assurance. The monthly summary of receipts and payments, which is verified to be same, which backs up the previous one. Number three, we took all reasonable steps to assure ourselves that our own matters are actual, potential, and compliance, with yours, et cetera, et cetera, I won't read all of that out, a waste of time. Evidence for that is review of systems in internal control carried out in month nine, fifteen. Review of financial regulations, one sixteen. Setting of budgets and approval by council, one sixteen. Internal audit, June sixteen. Number four, which is we provide proper opportunity during the year for the exercise of electors' rights and importance and requirements of the accounts and audit regulations. Notices displayed within statutory periods, copies are held on file. Notice of conclusion of audit displayed to be inspected by the public fourteen days, that was displayed in March, following the final one from internal auditor. So the fact that it's on the notice board and we've got the originals is the evidence of that. I have a lot of photographs of it on the notice board at the time, but I don't give any counsel with those of those members. Five, we carried out an assessment of risks based in smaller authority, et cetera. Risk assessment was carried out by an external assessor, and the risk register updated, that came to council in January sixteen. Internal audit email, in the eighth, month fifteen. Safe investments of OTC funds, you remember that came to council quite recently, and that's working progress. Six, we maintained throughout the year an adequate and effective system of internal audit and accounting records, et cetera. With the internal audit interim report, nine fifteen, internal audit final report, six sixteen. Seven, we took a protocol action on all matters raised in the reports from internal external audit. The new financial software has been installed as a result of Street's review. I'll amplify that slightly, it is not in use yet, we recall it came back to council whilst the clerk is off sick, work-related stress, it was agreed it would be inappropriate, as we don't have to, if he's not here to be trained, it would be inappropriate to use it, and the risk would be very high, i.e. there would be training issues. So the existing system has been maintained, council agree with that. Financial database is backed up daily off-site by Millennium, we recall that contracts have recently been extended. Question eight, we consider whether any litigation, large litters or commitments, events or transfers occurring might have drew a market year-end as a financial impact, et cetera, et cetera. The only one we have got is the sixty-two and a half thousand pound seat from R6C, which you'll remember is currently under investigation. We are still waiting for response, follow your meeting, myself and Michael, we are still waiting for response from R6C as to what that money is called and what we can spend on. I have sent an email quite recently, prompting them on this, to risk to be told that they're still awaiting to hear from the developer where the money came from. And number nine, because we're not the trust, is not capable. Oh yeah, that's the, and what's in the notices that were displayed, some notices tomorrow?
Michael, sorry, that's the type where I should have picked up on the note. Instead of twenty-eight, five, fifteen, it should have read thirteen for the night.
I do apologise if I've gone the wrong day there.
I was supposed to check it, sorry.
Thank you, that's very much, I apologise.
You're welcome.
So that is the, that is the evidence that we have to provide, hopefully provide you with assurance that all the boxes from one plate are free ticked as yes, and what's nine, ticked as non-applicable because we're not the trust. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Michael, Alison, and Michael. Any questions or alterations?
Just a practical point, really, number seven, financial software. If it's still happening, we have a new clerk, or Oakland clerk, who may be with us for a few months.
Three months initially.
Three months, six months. Are we going to look at installing the new software, otherwise it was a long delay.
I think that's sound what was going to...
It seemed to remember at our interview, he is training that software.
Yes, he is training it, and he is familiar with it, and he has actually worked with it. So that's how we see it, a perfect opportunity for him to train Alison on it. Also, the people that installed it are still going to be coming in anyway and would be doing training. We wanted to make sure Richard was back, because we didn't want to pay for two lots of training. But if the clerk's up for longer than the period of time that we think, I think it would make sense now, and with this new Oakland clinic, it will all happen. So we will be utilising it, it would make sense to utilise it. Yeah?
I said, you said it is installed, it's all ready to go. We just put it, obviously, we're training it, first of all, and then of course assistance will be transferred over. We can remember that, yet the risk of doing that is very high.
Yeah? Any other questions? Mine?
I have a couple of comments. The first one is obviously a finger sticking point for me, and I did ask the clerk if she'd be kind enough to look into it. The good councillor guide refers to the internal and external audits, and it's written by Now. It says the internal auditor carries out tests focusing on areas of risk, and after reporting to the council, which he hasn't done, signs a report on the annual return required by law, in brackets, to confirm that the council's systems and controls are in place. So I want to know why we have not been given the internal auditor's report. I've been told different things, but I've also been told that there may not be a legal thing to say that it should happen within the next year, but it wouldn't look good if the council didn't put it soon. I then read on about, which I won't bore you with all the text, it's there on page twenty-six, I read on, and it says that we are signing this, Adam will be on our behalf, with the confidence of certain things. If we've not seen the report, I've seen the report because I made a request for it, not a demand, I made a polite request, and Alison very kindly gave it to me, and she was told to take it back off of me, which I think is appalling. But anyway.
Yes, can we stick to the point, please?
Well, I'm just trying to highlight an issue there, that we are not, as far as I'm concerned, following the correct procedure over this whole thing this evening. And if I can move on to notices displayed, there has not been correct displaying of notices, and you did point out, Deputy Chairman, that no councillor's willing to photograph things. I photograph every notice and keep them to record, and there has been no...
Okay, go to the point.
Sorry, I said I've got a couple of points.
Well, that's the second point.
Yeah, so, well, sorry, three points. Yeah, now he raised it, so I'm answering it, and we have not complied. Also, the business with the new financial software, to me, that is one of the most serious problems at the council, and we're getting conflicting stories. I had the privilege of seeing the auditor's report, and the response is that we will not be implementing an upgrade until the two thousand and fifteen accounts have been audited. Now, if we take that into consideration, that that's likely to come back in September, and then we will already have started a new year of accounts, that means then that this council, because that's what it says, has decided to do it, I don't know when we decided to do that, that's appalling, because that's two thousand and eighteen. You don't get a guard...
Again, I'll try to write to Michael.
No, I'm just saying, you're just ignoring what I say. You're ignoring a serious issue.
Well, first of all, we're not anticipating that it will take September for the external auditor's report.
It did last time.
We're not anticipating that it will take September to get the external auditor's report back. Secondly, the assertion that the internal auditor hasn't reported during the year has already been dealt with on the sheet behind twenty, he did an interim report in September, and he's been in recently and now completed a final report, the lengthy one, in which he, upon which basis he has signed page five of the annual return, expressing himself as, expressing himself as content. The council only received that report a few days ago, and with everything that's been going on, the clerk and the finance group has not had an opportunity to look at it. It doesn't anticipate that we're very much wrong with it, there is confidence expressed by the internal auditor in that thirteen, forty page report, we just haven't given it out, because it hasn't been, for all we know, for the sake of exaggeration, it would have fifteen pages all duplicated or left out. We haven't done any of that. That is why it doesn't really, there's something sinister in that, and my saying to Alison on the phone today, ask Martin to leave it, has simply because of that, it hasn't been checked, and therefore it oughtn't to go out into the public domain until that point. And at the end of all of that, this is the government statement, and it's not really truly under the heading of what the internal auditor has or hasn't done. But we do have what looks to be a good quality, independently qualified internal auditor, and those are my answers.
Thank you. Right, Joyce?
Can I clarify something about this displaying of the notices?
Yes.
Somebody's just been accused of lying. Now, have they been displayed, or have they not?
This one here has not been signed.
No, the one that you held up.
There were notices displayed last year, the two fifteen ones, they were up, they were up longer than it should have been.
The sun went up late, that was the...
Sorry, I can't hear.
Indeed, from last year, the notices did go up in the notice boards, they went up late because a member of this council objected to them, and they were reinvestigated, or they incurred extra charges, but they went up late, but they did go up. So as far as I'm aware, every notice of this council's letter has been put up. There's no need has come before this meeting and said we have not put notices up. So the one thing that Richard White was good at, it was publicising these documents in the notice board out there. And that's all we have to do, we just go out in public place.
Thank you, Chairman.
Sir Chairman, can I just say that the external auditor's report would dispute that, because it had nothing to do with me, they said that the notices were not...
Right, we're not going to keep going over it.
And that's why we got a polyphobic...
We're going to look at the annual government statement, you've heard all the information from Michael. What we're looking for is proposal to approve the annual government statement, section one of the annual return, two fifteen, which is this A bit. So you're proposing, yes, seconded by Vince, all those in favour? That's anybody, mine, you against?
Yes, I'm against.
Martin, forces against, can you edit that as well? Okay, we'll sign all this after me. Yeah, I'm not going to do it in there, because you're already half an hour into this. Item six then is the annual statement of accounts, to approve the annual statement of accounts of two fifteen, two sixteen.
Okay, and to the chair, I want to add to that earlier two...
Okay, my councillor, I don't think you're happy to talk about annual statement of accounts, much as six.
Probably not very much, in the sense that they've been circulated. It's clear, as everybody knows from the previous meetings, that Streets were asked to do it. Here is the results of that, and they are ready to submit. Yeah, there's a technical point on the notice sheet, my fault, this version has got the chairman's signature on it, which Streets required so that they could issue their certificates.
Yes.
There is a set here, a blank set here tonight, which the chairman can sign as approval of this document if we vote to approve.
Okay, so the item six then is, I need somebody to propose to approve the annual statement of accounts.
I have a comment. I have a comment, please.
Uh, well, what's the comment?
Well, the comment is that the internal auditor's, um, report actually gives a different figure on line seven. So I have no confidence in this and I'd like to know who filled in section two. Was it Street's who has made the mistake?
Okay.
Which one is right and which one is wrong, please?
This, this, this goes back to reinforce what Michael Elliott said a few minutes ago. The internal audit report, the process of draft, it hasn't been checked yet for accuracy. But type mistakes and things yet, as Michael said before, we know there could be twenty-third pages of duplication in it. That is the reason why it would be checked first, then go to council, council have to do it, then.
But he's signed.
That's the internal, that's the internal audit report.
So he's signed that this is correct, but gives a document to this council with a different figure. Yes, it's only a pound, but I want to know who is right.
Can I just say that?
Is this right?
Some financial papers of this sort, they are rounded up to the pound and it isn't at all unusual for there to be one pound difference between one and another. It is a rounding, it is a process of rounding.
Okay.
What, just on the one figure?
Okay, right, yeah, I see, I see. Yeah, I was looking for a proposal to approve the annual statement, but you have to propose that, been seconded by, uh, Jasmine. That's handled as well. All those in favour? Uh, anybody in favour? Martin, you against?
I am.
It's up to me to probably, um, and then item seven is the, well, just as the annual return. The document itself, it's just to approve section two of the annual return, two fifteen, two sixteen. There's no, it's just a whole thing, is it?
No, it is, it is certainly.
Oh, that page, uh, it's one page, I'm similar, but it's used, please. Yeah, yeah.
Well, that's all it was, Mike. That's all it was, Mike, hearing.
Okay, uh, annual turn is prepared by councillor Hayley, seconded by councillor Flo, are you in favour? Uh, we all, you're all, I think you can put down Vince for that, not quite that ability. So everyone's in favour? One objection or against, which is capital books. Uh, so it's now, we'll sign all these papers in the final turn. It's now eighteen thirty-four and this extraordinary meeting, you know, is now finished. Thank you very much to everybody for leaving this. The planning park starts at seven o'clock, so we have twenty-five minutes, comfort break, tea break.